At 6:05 PM and Superintendent Cock is off today. So we are blessed to have Mr. Thompson here in his absence, working with us. And I'd just like to take a minute and welcome everybody. We have some children up here who are going to perform for us in a minute and we have a great crowd out here. So thank you for coming. Um, so first off this evening, I will ask for roll call.
Mr. Raymond Daniels?
Present.
Mr. Darryl Love?
Present.
Mr. Tyler Murphy?
Present.
Mr. Will Nash?
Present.
Ms. Stephanie Spires?
Present. And tonight, we have three honorary board members. Those of you who've been to our meetings in the past, you know that each month, we have a classified student and staff or teacher representative on our board and we encourage them to engage and ask questions. And so this evening, our first honorary board member is Whitney Evans and she's from Locust Trace Agri Science Center and she's our student representative. Whitney is a senior at Lafayette High School and in her fourth year at Locust Trace Agri Science Center. She has maintained over a 3.5 GPA since the ninth grade. At Locust Trace, she has completed the pre-vet program to become a certified veterinarian assistant, as well as passed the animal science KOSSA. She is a Locust Trace ambassador and has a PUP, which is their form, we said that's pup, right?
Yes.
She has, which is their form of student council for the past three years. During her time at Locust Trace, she has been very active in our FFA chapter. She has served as chapter recruitment chair, vice president, and is currently serving as chapter president. Through FFA, Whitney has been able to compete in many different contests such as Extemporaneous Speaking, Parliamentary Procedure, and Vet Science CDE, and will be competing at Nationals for Vet Science. Due to her exposure to the agricultural industry, she plans to attend the University of Kentucky to study agriculture education with a double minor in animal science and agriculture sustainability to educate our world about the amazing industry we call agriculture. Welcome, Whitney.
Thank you.
And Ruth Ann Lane from Leestown Middle is our teacher representative this month. Ruth Ann is a graduate at the University of Kentucky and is in her second year agri-science teacher at Leestown Middle School. Ruth Ann is also the committee chair of the Middle School Agricultural Education Standards Committee for the Kentucky Department of Education. Ruth Ann has a passion for agriculture education and helping students achieve success within the Leestown Middle Future Farmers of America chapter. In her free time, Ruth Ann enjoys gardening and taking their pug Phoebe to the dog park with her husband Logan. Welcome.
Thank you.
And Kami Pettyjohn is from Ashland Elementary and she's the classified staff representative. During her 17 years in education, Kami has worked as the attendance clerk, registrar, and as administrative assistant here at IAKSS. Currently, she serves as the bookkeeper at Ashland Elementary School where she also manages transportation, coordinates field trips, and sometimes helps with cuts and scrapes from playground fun. Kami says her favorite part of being back in school is getting to talk to the students. They are so funny. She shares her favorite kids' stories with her husband, father, and her grandchildren. When she is not at work, she loves to support her husband's ministry through activities at their church, read on her iPad, take long naps, spend time with her family, and is especially happy at the beach. We want to welcome her this evening. And at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Murphy to do the pledge of allegiance and the reading of our mission statement in the moment of silence.
Please stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is to create a collaborative community that ensures all students achieve at high levels and graduate prepared to excel in a global society.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask for approval of the agenda, but I have one item that needs to be pulled and that's L1.
I move to adopt the amended agenda.
So I have a motion by Mr. Nash.
Second.
Second by Mr. Love. Any further discussion or questions? Fall in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. At this time, I would like to introduce our student performance tonight. We like to begin each school board meeting with a performance to showcase our talented students and high-quality arts education. Tonight, we welcome the Tate's Creek Elementary Commodore Cooking Club led by Master Chef Karen Miller. TCE is a connected, driven family that goes hard with a purpose, even in the kitchen. This group of sous chefs has been perfecting a couple of their most popular dishes to share with the Board of Education this evening. As Bobby Flay so famously said, "Cooking is a subject she can never know enough about. There's always something new to discover." Tonight, you can sit back, relax, and enjoy what these culinary inquiries have discovered. Let the à la carte samplings begin.
Welcome to Cooking Club presented by Chefs in Training. I am Chef Annabelle Van.
I am Chef Caesar.
I am Chef Shellhammer.
I am Chef Jenna Powell.
I'm Chef Chloe Sargent.
I am Chef Naomi Cass.
I'm Chef Ariana Van Steenberg.
I am Chef Annabelle Matthews.
I'm Chef Samantha Lopez.
I'm Chef Amalia.
I am Chef Ava McCurry.
I am Chef Solomon Williams.
And our executive chef is Ms. Karen Miller. Our goal is to learn how to independently prepare healthy, economical, and simple and delicious snacks. Our snacks do not require cooking on a stove or baking. However, we sometimes use the microwave. We also have to learn the following, the safety rules that are required. You know, you know how to use sharp knives and clean up after yourself. Our dishes for you today are Ritz cracker pizzas, rainbow sandwiches, Oreo truffle dessert, and our drink is our Veriyon Creek water that is made with lemons and limes. Bon appetit. Our first dish, Ritz cracker pizzas, is an appetizer with Ritz crackers served as the crust, plain or strawberry cream cheese as the cheese topping, and your own choice of fruits, additional toppings. We are serving you banana, blueberry, and raspberries as our fruit topping with strawberry and plain cream cheese. All you do is spread the cheese on the cracker and add your fruit toppings and voila.
Our main course, rainbow sandwiches, will surely make you want to come back for seconds. The ingredients consist of soft flour tortillas, deli meat of your choice, and either mayo, cream cheese, or ranch dressing. To prepare this simple, yet, oh, yet elegant main course spread, your choice of cream cheese, mayo, or ranch dressing. Add a slice of, or duo of your meat, then top with cheese and your choice of vegetables. Roll up and enjoy. Our choices this evening are cream cheese, ham, turkey, shredded carrots, lettuce, sliced peppers, and onions. Thank you.
Our final course this evening is certainly our favorite dessert. This Oreo truffle will leave your mouth watering. Ingredients consist of crushed Oreos, softened cream cheese, butter, powdered sugar, milk, vanilla extract, vanilla pudding, and thawed coalwood. Simply cream and melt together, the ingredients fold them into the set pudding layer with Oreos until they're ready to serve.
Okay, thank you all, and I really appreciate my little chefs coming out tonight. We hope that you enjoyed the food we've prepared. For a time's sake, we had to prepare a lot of it early. However, they are preparing the appetizer, the Ritz crackers for the fruit pizza, and we are showing a sampling of how to make the Oreo truffle. You have spa, or our creek water in your coffee mugs. I would also like to thank Ms. James for helping me with this. I appreciate Ms. Paul and Ms. Nancy, our Family Resource Center Director, for offering this class after school. I've really enjoyed it. This is the third class. And we also hope that you take your mugs home and you can remember our little chefs in this night while you're drinking out of a TCE coffee mug. And also, this class is offered for third and fourth graders. We have two sessions, one session in the fall and one session in the spring, and the children have to write a paragraph as to why they want to be in the cooking club. And then they're chosen, I choose 12 students for each class, and this is my third class. I had two classes last year and this is the 12 for the first semester, and then I'll be choosing 12 more in January. So they will be serving your food to you in just a minute. We hope you enjoy and thank you all for coming out and supporting us tonight.
Well, this is a treat. Ms. Pettyjohn asked me if she needed a snack, how long this meeting would go tonight, and I did not know that we had snacks at tonight's meeting. So this is definitely a treat. So, we... Oh, here we, our little servers are coming.
Oh, thank you. Nice.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. It's yummy.
I bet, I bet.
Having my creek water.
It's creek water.
Thank you so much, it's delicious.
Guess what, wait till you ask.
Oh.
Oh my gosh, thanks so much.
I don't think she has any dessert.
Oh, that's your dessert.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay.
You have to eat it.
Be asleep up here, right?
I know. They are going to put this.
Oh, thank you, right here.
Oh, thank you.
There you go, there you go, there you go. Oh, gosh.
This is our water.
Creek water, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
That's really good.
Do you all, you all are good?
Are we ready?
Student plates for that.
Oh, two more.
If we got, oh, I think we've got them, there's one.
I think we just need one maybe.
One more plate.
I think we have plenty of desserts here.
Oh, here it comes.
We don't have a dessert back here.
All the way around, all the way around. Thank you, thank you.
Keep going, keep going.
Thank you. And that should be enough.
Thank you so much.
Can we get, we need one hour's time to record the hot card.
Everything.
Oh, can you?
And then we're good.
Wow, you got served by our.
He's more than creek water, right?
It's better than a creek water.
Touche.
All right, so I think we're free to eat. Another round of applause for our great chef. And if we have any parents or family members in the audience, we'd ask that you stand because we want to thank you for supporting your little chefs up here this evening. Don't be shy. And I, I think this is really awesome. Lisa, I don't know, is there a way that maybe we can publish these recipes on like social media or something so that parents can have some ideas? Because I know as parents, we're always looking for fun things to do with our kids and get our kids involved in cooking, and I think this is a really neat opportunity.
Madam Chair, I'm going to say this.
Yes.
For eight years, I've been coming here and watching performances, right? This is the tastiest performance I've ever witnessed.
Well, at this time, I would like to invite my fellow colleagues up front for our presentations and recognitions. That lemon water is really good. All right, so first up tonight, we have the 2019 Kentucky State Fair. Since 1902, the Kentucky State Fair has grown to amaze and attract an average of 600,000 guests annually for exciting competitions, educational and entertaining exhibits, and fun attractions. Several students from Locust Trace Agri Science Center participated in competition at Summer State's Fair. The floriculture team was runner-up with Kiara Bruce, Maddie Phelps, Louis Glasscock, and Max Warnke earning ribbons. These students are led by instructor Daniel Bussel. Please join the board in congratulating them on their success. If we have any friends or family members of these students here tonight, we ask that you stand so we can recognize you for supporting your students. So, not that we're bragging or anything, but Fayette County Public Schools boasts 45 semifinalists in the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program. These students are among some 16,000 outstanding high school seniors who will compete for about $32 million in college scholarships. About 90% of the semifinalists nationwide will advance, and more than half of the finalists will win a scholarship in the spring. And FCPS, these teenagers are some of the most involved students, and many of them sent their regrets this evening that they could not attend. So I am going to read all the schools and all the semifinalists, and I ask that if you are here, you come up when your name is called, and we will hold applause till the end, and we will take a picture with everyone that is here this evening. So, congratulations to the following students. From Bryan Station High, Madeline Farrar. From Henry Clay High School, Gus Colby, Eli Flomhoff, Natalie Hayslip, Paul Kammer, Megan Kaufman, Isha Kulstria, Boomi Shaw, Brianna Thompson, and Helen Young. From Lafayette High School, Benjamin Adair, John David Harris, Anya Hartman, Isaac Martin, Kayden Pearson, and Katrina Reddy. And from Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School, John Atkins, Nicholas Bach, Henry Blythe, Catherine Cunningham, William Dean, Abigail Pfister, Rika Gali, Grace Goff, Amal Guandil, Alan Luall, David Manche, Graham Marshall, Megan Mattingly, Nason Mohammed Zadeh, Rohan Rauch, Kylie Schmidt, Sayed Shaw, Brian Shi, Jeffrey Sheen, Parker Smith, Ashley Su, David Valuka, Eddie Wan, Jason Wang, Libby Weaver, Nicole Wong, Angie Xiao, Evan Yang, and Steven Yin. Please join the board in congratulating these outstanding seniors from across the district. And if we have any friends or family members of these students, we ask that you be stand and be recognized. at Leestown Middle School. She accepted the award from the Kentucky Association for School Social Work last month. Lori earned a master's degree in social work from the University of Kentucky and her licensed clinical social work credentials from the Kentucky Social Work Board. Before Leestown, she was a Title I school social worker at Northern Elementary and Jesse Clark Middle and a guidance counselor specialist at Athens-Chelsburg Elementary. She has tallied 20 years altogether in Fayette County Public Schools. Previously, she worked three years as a school basement health provider at Julia R. Ewen, Northern, and Ashland Elementarys. Please join the board in recognizing Lori on this latest achievement. Is there any family members or friends here of Lori tonight? We ask that you stand and be recognized as well for supporting your... Children sacrifice the most. Mine are out back playing and are like, "You got a meeting again?" So I understand, thank you. The 2019 Energy Star Award. Each year, the Environmental Protection Agency's Energy Star Program honors a group of businesses and organizations that have made outstanding contributions to protecting the environment through superior energy achievements. Here to present this honor to Frederick Douglass High School is Carrie Kelty, the lead mechanical engineer from CMCA.
Energy Star is a program administered by the EPA that rates facilities on energy performance. With the efforts of the Tate Hill Jacobs Design Team, the faculty and staff, and the Facilities Maintenance Department, Frederick Douglass High School has achieved the first perfect 100 Energy Star score for a high school in the state of Kentucky. With this energy performance, the district is saving approximately $220,000 per year when compared to an average performing school. Congratulations on this rare and distinguished energy performance achievement.
The Kentucky Chapter of the American Institute of Architects has also recognized Frederick Douglass High School for Achievement of Excellence in Architectural Design. And here to present this honor is Sabrina Oaks from Tate Hill Jacobs.
Hello, I'm Sabrina Oaks, principal at Tate Hill Jacobs, and with me today is Katrina Littrell, an architect in our office. Sounds like it's Frederick Douglass Day. This past summer, the Kentucky Chapter of the American Institute of Architects convened their Honor Award Jury in New York City with the goal of recognizing and applauding works of Kentucky architecture that exhibited design excellence and that promoted public awareness and appreciation of the diversity, quality, and scope of Kentucky architecture. The jury singled out five projects for recognition, one of which was Frederick Douglass. The jury commended the award-winning projects for an inspiring commitment to environmental concerns and accessibility of design, as well as demonstrating enthusiasm and a striving towards innovative architecture. In their published statement, the jury noted Frederick Douglass High School acts as a positive model for a sustainable future. There is a strong use of daylighting, allowing the building to seem as if every programmatic space has access to daylighting and exterior views, while the planning of the school fosters a sense of community by providing visual connection from one space to another. So on behalf of Tate Hill Jacobs Architects, I would like to congratulate the district and the students and staff of Frederick Douglass on this very prestigious award. And we would present the award, but the school made off with it, so. They were already ready for it.
And for those of you wondering why we asked Mr. Thompson to get in the middle, and if you're not familiar, he oversees when he's not filling in for the superintendent tonight. He oversees all of our facilities and our construction builds and everything in the district. So he is what makes sure our schools get open on time and that they are safe and secure. And so that's why we felt that he should be honored as well this evening. So speaking of environmental awards, several of our schools achieved top state and national green honors, school honors from the US Department of Education last spring. And here to help recognize them is Billy Bennett from the Kentucky Environmental Institute of Agriculture. And here to help recognize them is Billy Bennett from the Kentucky Environmental Education Council. Come on up.
Hello, Billy Bennett. I'm the Executive Director of the Kentucky Environmental Education Council. We're a very small state agency attached to the Education and Workforce Development Cabinet. We administer the Kentucky Green and Healthy Schools Program, which is an environmental service learning program where students identify, research, and correct an environmental issue or problem within their school in nine different categories. We are also the nominating body to the U.S. Department of Education's Green Ribbon Schools Program, which recognizes schools that are exemplary in the three pillars of reducing environmental impact and cost, improving the health and wellness of students and staff, and providing effective environmental and sustainability education, which incorporates STEM, civic skills, and green career pathways. Tonight, I am pleased to recognize and honor the following schools for their achievement. The Academy for Leadership at Mill Creek Elementary has finished the solid waste category in the Green and Healthy Schools Program. Next, we'd like to recognize Bryan Station High School that also completed the solid waste category in the Green and Healthy Schools Program. And finally, I would like to recognize Tates Creek Elementary School, which is the recipient of the 2019 National Green Ribbon School Award.
The Kentucky National Energy Education Development Project Junior Level Youth Award. The Kentucky National Energy Education Development Project is part of the National Nonprofit Education Association that focuses on K-12 energy education. Here to present an award from NEED is Karen Rieger.
Thank you. My name is Karen Rieger and I'm the State Director for the NEED project here in Kentucky. We are a national organization and each year we recognize outstanding student leadership in the area of energy education. And this year, the Bag Street Boys, Bag Street Boys, was our winning group from SCAPPA Bluegrass. And they did some research on plastic bags and determined that, in their research, that about a million plastic bags are distributed every minute and they're only used for 15 minutes. So their project this year was to reduce plastic waste and find out a way to productively use those bags that are typically thrown away. So they received an honor and received that honor, their plaque, earlier, but they were recognized as one of our National Middle School Teams of the Year. Ashley?
Next in our agendas this evening, we have five proclamations. And our first proclamation is recognition of November 11th through 15th, 2019, as National School of Psychology Awareness Week. It is my honor to invite Associate Director of Special Education Adam Lickteig to read the proclamation and ask any of our school psychologists to stand and be recognized while the proclamation is read.
Whereas all children and youth learn best when they are healthy, supported, and receive an education that enables them to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. And whereas sound psychological principles are integral to instruction and learning, social and emotional development, prevention, early intervention, and school safety, and support of culturally diverse student populations. And whereas the district's school psychologists are specially trained to foster and deliver in the school and community a continuum of mental health services and academic supports that lower barriers to teaching and learning. And whereas school psychologists help create safe, healthy, and responsive learning environments for all students by strengthening connections between home and school and helping kids feel connected, affirmed, and ready to achieve their individual goals.
Now therefore be it proclaimed that the members of the Fayette County Board of Education hereby join the rest of the country in celebrating November 11th through 15th, 2019, our School of Psychology Awareness Week. Be it further proclaimed that the members of the school board express their deep appreciation to all of our school psychologists for the work they do to help every child be successful in school and in life. Be it further proclaimed that the proclamation be spread on the official minutes of the Board of Education. A motion is in order to adopt the proclamation celebrating November 11th through 15th, 2019, as National School of Psychology Awareness Week. A motion by Mr. Daniels.
Second.
A second by Mr. Love. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Our next proclamation celebrates November 18th through the 22nd, 2019, as American Education Week. We are honored this evening to have Fayette County Education Association President Jessica Hyler here to read the proclamation. As she's coming forward, I'd like to invite members of our entire education community to stand and be recognized while the proclamation is read.
Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, preparing students to become the next generation of leaders and preserving our nation's founding values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas education enables children to overcome challenges, develop their individual talents, make discoveries about themselves, guide their own destinies, and realize their unlimited potential. And whereas by challenging all students to reach high academic standards and graduate prepared to excel in a global society, our students give them hope for and access to any future they can imagine for themselves. And whereas district employees, be they support professionals, teachers, administrators, or substitute educators, work tirelessly to serve the students of Fayette County with care and professionalism. And whereas schools bring together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business and faith leaders, extended families, and elected officials to work toward the common goal of pushing all students to success.
Thanks, Jessica. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the members of the Fayette County Board of Education hereby join the rest of the country in celebrating November 18th through the 22nd, 2019, as American Education Week. Be it further proclaimed that the members of the school board express their deep appreciation to our entire educational community, students, family, community volunteers, business, civic and faith leaders, school district administrators, teachers, and support professionals for their collective efforts to make the Fayette County Public Schools an amazing place to learn and work. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation be spread on the official minutes of the Board of Education. A motion is ordered to adopt the proclamation celebrating November 18th through the 22nd, 2019, as American Education Week.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Murphy, a second by Mr. Nash. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you all.
Our next proclamation celebrates November 21st, 2019, as National Family Involvement Day. We are honored this evening to have Maxwell Elementary School PTA President Maria Andrade Distler with us this evening to read the proclamation. As she's coming forward, I'd like to ask anyone with students in our schools to stand and be recognized while the proclamation is read.
Whereas families are their children's first and most influential teachers, and in today's changing society, also includes grandparents, relatives, guardians, foster families, and other caring adults who care for children on a daily basis. And whereas the active involvement and support of families plays a significant role in the success of our schools and helps keep the focus on what's best for students. And whereas family members serve as chaperones, mentors, after-school tutors, guest readers, booster club members, PTA, PTSA, and PTO members, guest speakers, classroom helpers, school-based decision-making council representatives, and countless other roles. And whereas family involvement in education also includes the multitude of ways caring adults support children outside of school by reading a bedtime story, checking homework, turning off the television, monitoring screen time, ensuring they get proper medical and dental care, augmenting classroom experiences, talking with and listening to their children, demanding high academic standards, and advocating for all students. And whereas partnerships between families and schools promote the social, emotional, and academic growth of children and send a message about the importance of education, planting the seeds for a lifetime of learning.
Now therefore be it proclaimed that the members of the Fayette County Board of Education hereby join the rest of the country in celebrating November 21st, 2019, as National Family Involvement Day. Be it further proclaimed that the members of the school board express their deep appreciation to all families who work as partners with our schools and give of themselves for the good of our children. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation be spread on the official minutes of the Board of Education. A motion is now in order to adopt the proclamation celebrating November 21st, 2019, as National Family Involvement Day.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Love, a second by Mr. Nash. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Our next proclamation celebrates November 20th, 2019, as Educational Support Professionals Day. We are honored this evening to have Fayette County's Education Support Professionals Association Vice President Tanika Coles here with us to read the proclamation. While she is coming forward, I'd like to invite any of our classified employees to stand and be recognized during the reading of this proclamation.
It's okay to stand.
Whereas Fayette County Education Support Professionals play an essential role in creating and maintaining positive supportive environments for students. And whereas our education support professionals provide optimal learning conditions for students by keeping schools clean, safe, and comfortable, working with teachers to help all students achieve to the best of their abilities, delivering students safely to and from school, preparing and serving healthy meals so students can focus on learning, assisting visitors, and student families and staff, and ensuring the smooth operations of districts in human resources, budget, staffing, finances, technology, and other essential support areas. And whereas without our education support professionals, students wouldn't get the extra help and attention. The bells wouldn't ring, the buses wouldn't run. And I always say it again, because I'm a bus driver, the buses would not run. The budget wouldn't get finalized, the phones wouldn't get answered, nutritional meals wouldn't be served, computers wouldn't connect, and classrooms wouldn't be safe and clean and well-maintained. And whereas going to work is more than just a job for our support professionals because it requires an uncommon dedication to doing what's right for our students.
Now therefore be it proclaimed that the members of the Fayette County Board of Education hereby join the rest of the country in celebrating November 20th, 2019, as National Education Support Professionals Day. Be it further proclaimed that the members of the school board express their deep appreciation to all of our support professionals for the amazing job they do to support our students and schools as integral members of the Fayette County Public Schools. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation be spread on the official minutes of the Board of Education. A motion is in order to adopt the proclamation celebrating November 20th, 2019, as National Education Support Professionals Day.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Nash, a second by Mr. Murphy. I just want to echo, when we walk into our schools, these are the individuals that are on the front lines and this is who greets, you know, our children and our families. And I, I mean, they, I just can't say enough about our classified support staff and so I'm excited to see this. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Our last proclamation celebrates November 22nd, 2019, as Substitute Educators Day. We're honored this evening to have Director of Human Resources Jennifer Dyer here with us to read the proclamation. And if we have any substitute educators with us this evening, I'd like to invite them to stand during the reading of the proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas Fayette County substitute school employees play an essential role in the maintenance and the continuity of the daily education for our, all of our students. And whereas the unmatched commitment of these professionals is evidenced by the fact that they are willing to be called early in the morning, just like our bus drivers, early in the morning to take over lessons with short notice and ensure that quality education is maintained in our classrooms. And whereas our professional substitutes make a valuable and meaningful contribution to the success of our students by ensuring that the time they spend in school is productive. And whereas substitutes are living examples of flexibility as they adapt to different teaching styles, varied levels of planning, and diverse school environments to connect with the students they are called upon to teach on any given day. And whereas although the role of the substitute teacher may be different from that of the regular teacher in some aspects, it is equally demanding, essential, and professional.
Now therefore be it proclaimed that the members of the Fayette County Board of Education hereby join the rest of the country in celebrating November 22nd, 2019, as National Substitute Educators Day. Be it further proclaimed that the members of the school board express their deep appreciation to all of our substitute educators for the amazing job they do to support our students and schools as integral members of the Fayette County Public Schools. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation be spread on the official minutes of the Board of Education. A motion is in order to adopt the proclamation celebrating November 22nd, 2019, as Substitute Educators Day.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Love, a second by Mr. Murphy. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Ms. Dyer. All right. Just a minute, I'm throwing scripts away here. I just want to say one thing before I turn it over to Myron because I promised I would say this tonight at the board meeting and I'm not sure where to throw it in. But as many of you know, it is parent-teacher conference time of year and my children have not gotten the memo. This is the week they're supposed to be extra good because there's definitely some minus dojos. But I've had multiple meetings due to my multiple children and the feedback on the science, the amplified curriculum, is the teachers love it and the students love it. And I know that all of my girls are doing better in science. I have noticed that. But I met with one of their teachers who just went on for about 10 minutes and made me promise to come back and tell you all thank you for purchasing and making that investment. So I wanted to share that with you all this evening.
Great. Thanks.
And at this time, I will turn it over to you. And at this time, I will turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you Stephanie. Before we begin the superintendent's report tonight, I would like to add my own congratulations to the students, employees that we honored this evening and also welcome our student, teacher and classified representatives this evening. Ruth Ann, Whitney and Kami, you represent important voices here at the table and we encourage you to share your thoughts and observations so that the actions taken here will be the best they possibly can be. First under the superintendent's report, I would like to call on Fayette County Public Schools Title I Coordinator, Ms. Mindy Mills, and YMCA of Central Kentucky Vice President of Mission Advancement, Jessica Berry, to present a report on the success of our Power Scholars Academy partnership this past summer. Ladies, welcome.
All right. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. As Myron said, I'm Mindy Mills, the Associate Director of Title I, and this is Jessica Berry.
Vice President of Mission Advancement for the YMCA of Central Kentucky.
As you know, we're presenting on Power Scholars, which is our summer program that we had this past summer, and Jessica's going to kick us off and talk about that a little bit.
So we're excited to be here for the third year after completing our third summer. Just to tell you a little bit about Power Scholars Academy, it truly does represent a collaboration between the school districts, the YMCA of Central Kentucky, several other organizations that sponsor and partner this program. It comes from Bell Excel. Many years ago, a group of Harvard students started this program while they were doing recreational activities with students, saw that they had a need academically and created, and from there, Bell Power Scholars Academy was born. They approached YUSA, our parent company, because they knew we had a focus on youth development and felt like that was the best way to reach our youth, and then from there, each individual Y approaches our school districts and associations and other businesses and organizations in that community to help support this program. So that was where the spark was lit today. Bell Excel has served over 10,000 scholars by 2017. Three years ago, we brought it here to Fayette County, excited about it, served one school of about 100 scholars. Two years ago, we served, we served 13 schools with about 400 scholars. This past summer, we served 16 schools and almost 500 scholars. So we are really excited about the growth of the program and the growth in each individual scholar.
So let's real quickly, if I can do it from memory, we'll talk about the schools that we specifically served in Fayette County this past summer. We had three hub sites and those hub sites were at Coventry Oak, at Yates and at Bryan Station Middle School. Our Transportation Department, Myron, give you a little kudos, is awesome on making us, making this happen for us in the summertime. The Coventry Oak Hub Site served students from Coventry Oak, from Booker T. Washington, James Lane Allen, Cardinal Valley and Arlington Elementary. And then the Yates Hub Site served students from Deep Springs, Northern Russell Cave, William Wells Brown and Yates. And then the middle school site that was housed at Bryan Station Middle, served a lot of Bryan Station Middle School kids with some from LTMS, Crawford and Winburne. So it, it covered the gamut of all of our EZ, PZ, CSI schools that we, that we talk about being our high needs locations. So the next, because we're kind of holding off because once we click, the video is actually going to start, and I think Manny may have shared this video at a previous meeting, but we think it's worth seeing again, and this was done in partnership with WKYT.
Graduation is not something that you typically see this time of year in the summer, but about 500 students worked hard to keep their skills sharp during the summer. WKYT's Krista Frost talked with some parents who say they're grateful for the opportunity.
It's a crowd of smiling and proud faces, and all of these Fayette County students have a lot to be proud of.
On average, these students will gain about three months of academic success in math and literacy.
That's the point of the Power Scholars Academy, to keep their skills sharp while schools out for summer.
As a parent has to be thinking, what are we going to do today? What haven't we done? Or things like that, you know?
With two sons, Annalee Contreras is always trying to plan summer activities, but this program cuts that task in half while keeping her son on his toes.
He's happy to come every day here. I think he would hated it or he would hate me for sending him, but no, he's actually happy that he comes every day here.
Plus, it's nice knowing her child is in good hands.
Program keeps him busy and you can also say stay away from trouble.
A safe, challenging environment is one of the things Superintendent Emmanuel Kulk wants for these kids, but there's a little more that he wants them to take away.
For the students to be curious about the world in which they live, identify problems and work towards finding solutions.
Something they're one step closer to doing now that they're Power Scholars. In Lexington, Krista Frost, WKYT.
Too cute. This is the third year for that program. Fayette County has about 500 students enrolled in three hubs across the city.
So it's always great for us to receive parental feedback. We also get teacher feedback as well as scholar feedback at the middle school level. The program consists of some key elements, the academic rigor, the enrichment. Our scholars had an opportunity to do enrichment that included dance, mindfulness and coding. Our scholars learned how to do coding just based on the towels on the floor in the school building. We also do student empowerment, so we talk about growth mindset, having a can-do attitude, and then we incorporate family engagement activities where we talk to our families about being more engaged in the education of their children, but we also give them fun activities to get out and have some, spend some time with their families. So for example, we had a day at the ballpark at the Legends Stadium.
So as we move forward, you also have a flyer, front and back sheet that we gave you in front of you with the, with the data that is there in the PowerPoint. This past summer, our students on average had a two months gain in reading and in math, and then we're not going to read all that to you, but you see some of the comments from the, the percentages from the surveys that Jessica mentioned that were conducted of teachers and of the scholars and of families, and it is very positive. It's very heartwarming to know that we feel like we are making a difference in these students' lives, and as that parent said, you know, what else would they be doing in the summer? We know that they are in a safe environment. Any of those? Okay, move on then. All right. So as we go on, I think the next slide, if we go on to that, we'll see that we also try to look at our MAP data that we know that we give in the spring and in the fall. And for our elementary kids, it kind of equaled out about a 50% of the students that participated in Power Scholars maintain or increase their MAP score. The middle schoolers did a little bit better, there we go, at about 68 and 57%. So we're excited that, the whole purpose obviously academically is that they don't have that summer regression, and that's what we want to happen for them, that they can maintain or even improve their academics as well as participating in those enrichment activities over the summer. Right, so in Fayette County, I'll do that part first, our investment is close to $400,000. All of that at this point, up to this point, has been able to be funded from Title I, our carryover money and things that we have there. We hope to be able to continue that. A large portion of it, as you see there, goes to stipends for the teachers. This past summer, we had thirty-five, around thirty-five full-time teachers plus substitutes that were available to fill in, and each classroom also has a teacher assistant. So they work for five full weeks this week, this summer it was 23 days because we had a July 4th holiday in there, but they also have two or three days that they come in prior to that for some professional development there that they are stipend for as well. Fayette County also provides the instructional coach for each building, so it's kind of like the summer school principal, the go-to person of who's there to help everything going and coordinating. So our part is the transportation and the funding and the stipends for the teachers.
And the YMCA of Central Kentucky, part of that is just shy of 200,000. Most of that is the curriculum as well as we have to have a program coordinator in each building. That is a requirement of Bell, just like the certified teacher and the assistant teachers. We also cover the cost of field trip admissions and thanks to Myron and his department, again, transportation, we contract with Fayette County Public Schools to kind of cut that cost a little bit. The field trips, we really enjoy because as you heard Manny talk about, we want to make sure they, they're curious, that they have a love of learning, so they go to places like Salado Wildlife where they get an opportunity to explore the outdoor, and our middle schoolers for two years in a row have gone to Asbury Rope Courses, and so they learn the, the team building skills and those kind of things. And then we also provide the snacks and the additional supplies that's necessary for There you can see a list of some of our financial supporters across this community. We asked, we had a, we put a call out when we first started with Bell Excel and Power Scholars Academy, and this community rose to the occasion. So you'll see the list, and they continue to support this program and Fayette County Public Schools because they see the value of it and they know that we are investing in our future.
So as we kind of look at next steps, we have the intention of collecting some additional data, really diving in more to that MAP data and looking at the impact it's had on our students compared to those that did not participate in Power Scholars. We discussed at our leadership team meeting last week, establishing a committee to really study the impact and moving forward and really determining what schools we want to continue with, which schools we want to continue to participate in this program, renewing our partnership with the YMCA and then start planning for the summer. It is a lot of work, but when we see those kids, you know, those teachers and kids have committed five weeks of their summer as well, so it's worth it just to know that they've got that opportunity. That's it? Questions?
Yeah, just one question, you know, of course I had one. What percentage of the students actually returned from last year?
We, that is part of our further evaluation because we want to do that three-year trend, how many that not just returned last year but have participated over the last three years. That is a goal. We try to reach out to them and recruit them first because we want that longitudinal data. So I'll have to get back to you on that.
No problem. Thank you very much. But you know, I will say this, and I think I love the program, you know, had an opportunity to go see it last year, and one of the things that I think it, how it ties and aligns is because when we think about the additional resources that we provide sometimes to our schools during the school year, and you think about the richness of experiences that some kids have, because how did you spend your summer? A lot of people travel, while they travel, they learn and they pick up on certain things if they go to DC or different areas. But for this particular program, I think being able to, like you said before, we don't want kids to kind of have a, that summer slide and then lose, but we want them to keep, if not, you know, increase a little bit. So it does provide, now looking at this button, equity is a verb, you know, and that's an action type thing that we're doing, so when we talk about not having programs that are so differently spread out, this is a program that's pretty consistent, and so when you, Stephanie talked earlier about being able to have that common curriculum that we have within our schools so that everybody has the chance to be at least on the same footing as for access to those types of things, I think this is just one of those programs as a community that we have done. And so I know that we talk a little bit, not to my board members, when we talk a little bit about some of the funding that we have to put forth for this particular program, I think the thing that we have to always think about is if we start something and we know it's working and it's helping to help with those particular issues that we identify, it's just those things that we know we have to continue to keep, keep in mind when we do our budgeting, you know? For example, sometimes funding may go away, but if we know a program generates that, it's some of those things, especially if it helps students, we have to keep those in mind, so. Thank you.
And I will echo the praises because you all serve many of the schools in my district and I've heard from numerous principals and teachers that they appreciate the work that you're doing, and especially the well-rounded nature of the program where it's not just focused. A lot of these programs are STEM-heavy, but there is a place for every child who has an interest in there with the focus on the arts and travel opportunities like the board member Love was saying that they may not otherwise get. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you Mindy and Jessica. Under the superintendent's report next, I would like to ask Equity Officer Darrell Thompson to give us an update on our equity work.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Y'all have any questions?
I'm going to give you a high-level overview of some work that we started well over a year ago. Dr. Billy Buchanan and myself sat here probably a year plus and talked about where children live and whether that matters and kind of posed that question. Since then, you've seen this over the summer, a regeneration of the concept, and now we've got some action taking place. We've convened a group, which we call the Collective Table, several weeks ago. I won't go through the list of names in fear of leaving somebody out, but when we talk about it takes an entire community to ensure the success of our schools, many of our city and community-based partners responded to that call, and we laid out the same question about where children lives matters. And so we've called this the Collective Impact Initiative, and as you can remember, six of our seven schools were contiguous, and so we looked at the common thread around those seven schools and what is it about those communities, what geographical footprint were they in, and we found that there was a contiguous boundaries that combined them all with the exception of one, but within the same footprint, the same variables, again and again echoed the, the causes, the root causes for some of the issues that we're facing in the community. And so if you know the community and if you are very familiar, if you've been boots on the ground, if you walk the, the streets of these communities, you'll see a common thread there. And so the response from the collective group involved health insurance, health carriers, housing, food banks, higher education, several, several, all the units that you can come up with, law enforcement, the mayor's office. And you also saw last week when the mayor called her press conference, that same response to faith-based community, knowing that in order for us to get this right, we've got to do it together. And so I wanted to again bring you all to the two schools of thought, and Manny may have shared this with you all in the past, that oftentimes one argues that it takes a, a truly high-performing school to ensure that this work is taking place, and then the other one, that it takes highly successful communities. We would say that these two are not mutually exclusive, it takes both, and we posed this same question to both groups, and all across that, that platform, they all agree that we, it's not just one or the other. And so knowing that, we've reconvened another task force. You saw Timothy Johnson, who was not able to be here at the last board meeting, but he has hit the ground running. His body of work is around collective impact. He created a task force well before he got here, and the task force started working to redesign their work at the United Way, particularly around collective impact. And so we've got a meeting tomorrow with a larger group focused on this exact same work, and so our work is running parallel. They really truly redesigned how they do business around this, this conversation. And so I'm here to let you all know that our focus continues to be around not just what we do in the seven hours of the school day, how do we expand our work outside into the 17, and we're doing that through this collective impact model. And so we're looking to reduce, you know, inequalities in the community, continue to drive change, and I'll leave you with this quote, "There's no power for change greater than a community discovering what it cares about." And you see when we lose lives and continue to hear gun violence, we've decided it is necessary for us all to come together. The mayor has launched Safety Net, the new community response to ensuring that their service delivery, not just after the fact, but prior to, early warning indicators to respond to the needs of our family. So wanted to give you all an update that we continue to, to do our part in a collective way, not just when we close our school doors, but how we also help support families in transition between teaching and learning at home. And so I will pause for any questions. And I left you with that little button there that says equity is a verb.
I want to thank, thank you Darrell for your leadership on this, and really for our superintendent who is not here. He has pulled this community together in regards to this thought of, we have to look into our communities of poverty to figure out as a group, as a society, as a, as a city, as a whole, all of our nonprofits, for-profits, there are a lot of great stakeholders at the table, a lot of great ideas, and I think this thought process of bringing the community in is going to be effective because like you said, we only get them for seven hours, and we have to figure out what we're going to do the rest of the time. I will tell you that if you look at that map, gentrification, or I guess the friendly word we're using now, neighborhoods in transition, plays a role in that. You cannot stop gentrification. It's like a ball rolling downhill, you can't stop it. What you can do is service the community and the people that live in that community more effectively, so some of the thought will be around that as well. How do we service the folks that are in that community that want to stay, for one? How do we give them the competitive advantage of the tools that they need so they can afford to stay in those neighborhoods? So there's a lot of thought, but we, we have a lot of potential neighborhoods in transition, and we have potential to move subsets of group from these neighborhoods into other neighborhoods that will essentially be doing the same thing. So if we can learn from this first experiment, we won't have to go through So if we can learn from this first experiment, we won't have to go through the painful process of doing this in other subsets of our community. And we all know we're very limited in real estate of what we have around here. We have, you know, it's a great community, but there's a growth issue that we definitely have. So, you know, we've got to figure out how to be more impactful more with the property that we do have and the communities that we have developed already. So, great job. I'm glad you guys got this off the ground finally and running with it. And it's data-driven. When they gave the presentation to all of our stakeholders, you can't deny the data. And it drills all the way down into all the economic, socioeconomic, every, every data point that you can pull out, crime, every data point you can pull out is being used. And I thought the mayor's response to this was very positive. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daryl.
Have a good evening.
And next on the agenda is me. Do you have to switch seats? My eyes are bad. Any of you guys watch Tiger yesterday? Wearing two hats, you know, he's the president cup, president and player. And so he was pretty happy with how the player responded yesterday. So I'd wear two hats.
I got you. We're not going to pay you twice though.
So there's our snapshot for Brenda Cowan and you will see that we are 96.4% done. The remaining pieces are strictly paperwork to close it out. There's a lot of forms and things of that nature, but all the hard stuff is done. They have full occupancy of the building, so we are officially out there. So Mr. Williams is happy to have us gone. But it's taken a little, took a little longer than we thought, but we came up with a great project and there's a rendering of the building. The work completed last month in September, we completed the corridors of sectors A and B, both painting and terrazzo, the sidewalks as well. Sod was 80% complete at that time and we also had half the windows in that section and we finished the grading. This month, we pretty much punched everything out. So all of that work is done and there are a few shots of them working last month to finalize the project and a few shots on the inside. So again, very happy to have this project come to closure and we're moving on. So with that being said, STEAM and Success Academies, there's a snapshot of our partners and the contract sum. And again, scheduled completion date of October 15, 2020, roughly 11% completed. A rendering of the building there. And if you've been past Georgetown Road, you can see there's a lot of activity, the construction fences up and we're moving forward there. Project Sign has been installed, the temporary fencing has been installed as well. Our building demolition is 95% complete. We had saw cutting slabs for the new work has started. Excavation of the foundations completed in Area B and to begin in Areas A and C. And we have under slab rough ends for the mechanical, electrical and plumbing in Areas B. And for the month of October, the silt fence was installed, site demo items are to begin. Building demolition to continue as needed for new work and foundations are completed in Area B and to begin in Areas A and C and structural steel erection is to begin in Area A and C as well. Few photos there.
So the October 15th completion date, is that, are we moving students in in?
January.
January.
So we have a little bit of a cushion.
Okay. I wasn't sure if we were going to Brenda Cowan this one or if we were.
Mid-year move, so, yes, so. Few more pictures. Bryan Station softball field house, this is sort of our model for Title IX compliance moving forward. Real quick overview of this particular project. Pearson and Peters Architects, we have our foundations poured and complete. Our block wall foundations are installed and gravel's been placed in the lifts. And we have our plumbing and electrical rough ends are in process. Our vapor barrier and termite treatment has started and we've second slab, we've had our second slab pour as well. And again, this will sort of be our model going forward at all of the different schools to make sure all of our girls' softball programs have a comparable field house. So we're pretty excited about that. And then more important work that we have going on, our Secure Vestable projects. Again, a listing of our architect partners and the general contractor. And again, the scheduled contract completion date on that is December of 2020, December of next year. You will see that Bryan Station has started. We've had three pre-construction meetings with Booker T, Crawford and Northern. And demolition has completed except for the existing interior curtain wall there at Bryan Station. And that must remain for security purposes until we have the new wall in place. The radius stud wall framing for the office is partially constructed and the above-ceiling demolition for the new HVAC that needs to go in that area to be conditioned is complete. A few snapshots there as well. So we're very excited about this. Meeting with our principal partners and all of the people on Spring Hill Drive, Linda Joseph and her team, making sure that we roll this out very intentionally and planning around testing and things of that nature. So we want to do, the schedule's subject to shift as things happen, but so far, so good, out the gate. So very excited.
I stopped by that every day, dropped my son off. That's been going seamless. They're doing a great job staying out of the way and still doing the work. Doing a good job.
And does 28 represent the total number of projects or are there still some beyond the 28?
28.
That's it?
Mm-hmm. Think that's it for the construction. And I think the 10-point safety plan may be next, unless you have questions.
Yes, so we can move on in from vestibles to a 10-point safety plan.
I think Martin's out of town. Correct. I think Martin's out of town. Correct.
Yeah, he's out.
Oh, gotcha. The 10-point safety plan, there are the items that we are focusing on in terms of making our schools more safe and secure. I have the first few items here. It's stuck? All right, so I'll let you take it. One more. Our middle and high school ID badges have been implemented. Our Crisis Go emergency management platform has been implemented at 35 schools with ongoing training district-wide. Our door alarms are in place and school protocols have been established. Our door access points now are at all school facilities. We did not have that before. Same with security cameras. Every school district, every school in the district has security cameras installed now. Our DVR camera quarters have been updated and complete. And there again with the Secure Vestables, many construction meetings taking place. I think the next site, Booker T Washington, is scheduled to begin this week, actually. We've had pre-construction meetings for the next two project sites, Crawford and Northern, and pre-construction meetings for the professional learning center at Spur Road and Windburn Middle. And our metal detectors and security ambassadors at all five of our high schools with the exception of Henry Clay. And again, that will coincide with the Secure Vestable project next year as we roll that out.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Currently, the police department is up to 60 officers. We have five that are currently in the police academy with three of those set to graduate. I think it's the second week of December. And two of them just started about two weeks ago and so they'll graduate in the middle of March. And we've been doing some community service projects, such as last week, we were invited to participate with the Special Olympics and Southland Christian Church. They partnered to give free medical services and sports physicals to the community. And we had some officers go and participate with that, show them our police cruisers and just interact with the kids. And we've been doing, don't have a picture of it, but we've also been getting involved in some parent drug education activities in the evenings. Some different schools have asked some officers to come in and do some of the parent education programs. So we've been working on that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are in the process of hiring five additional district mental health specialists. The interview process actually begins tomorrow. And I did the math just to give you an update on where that's bringing our ratios. So as of this time last year at the elementary level, our elementary students had a ratio of 577 students to one counselor, mental health professional. After this, this last round of hiring will be to 267 to one. So very close to our goal of 250 to one. Middle school this time last year was 299 to one. It is currently 246 to one. And high schools were at 249 to one. After we finish this round of hiring, we'll be at 214 to one. So that, that's amazing. Yes.
With regards to the social, emotional, and learning curriculum adoption timeline, we have been working closely in my department with the publishers of the selected SEL curricula. So at this time, information's been provided to the chiefs of the elementary schools and the high schools regarding the selection process for the site-based decision-making councils at each school to determine if they will adopt the curricula. And then at that point, the district's SEL coordinator will start working with the schools choosing to adopt, to schedule professional learning, place orders for materials, et cetera. All right. So this next update is regarding the comprehensive adolescent assessment and health promotion. So at this point, we have completed the staffing of full-time nurses at the high schools. We have an RFP for a comprehensive health assessment and services. And right now, we are in negotiations with interested vendors. And some of those vendors include Health First Bluegrass, the University of Kentucky. And together, they are developing plans for a pilot program. We are meeting again in a couple of weeks to kind of help them to fine-tune, to meet our schools' needs while also considering the services that we're already providing.
Social media monitoring continues?
She had to step away. The board contract will be coming up, I think, in the next couple of months. It's working really great. We're getting a lot of information in terms of threats and it's just needed in this day and time in terms of what we're doing. So I believe that this will be the first year that we've had that in place. So it should be coming back before the board, I think she said, in a couple of months.
As it relates to education and training, timing is golden. As we rolled out the collective impact work, the framework around how we're going to create opportunities in our community has unfolded as we've been able to earmark funds and allow those non-recurring funds to now be able to be utilized for this purpose. We have some programs that we're actually going to talk about tomorrow morning at our 8:30 meeting about what it is we can do within two hub zones, which is our promised neighborhoods. And what can we do to create trainings in those centers? So there's a concept, without saying too much, for how we can create physical brick-and-mortar locations so that families can come to that location when schools are closed to get supports like this. So we're actually rolling out some of this work and it's, again, timely that we freed up funds that now allow us to use those dollars in the community to support learning with families around safety at home. So you all had the copy of the book that we published, the first, I think, month out the gate. And within that book are strategies and activities around how to help families support pathways to school, healthy decision-making. All of this is going to help us support families in teaching and learning around the collective impact. So that's where we are with the education and training portion. Thank you.
Got the next one?
FAMU. The next FAMU is November 9th at Henry Clay. I know you all are UK football fans. If they would have lost this week, you probably would have not gone to the game. So you're going to have to decide, which flip a coin. They may lose that game too, but nevertheless, you won't lose coming to FAMU. For anybody out there that's a football fan, you can't lose. So this is a win for you. So November 9th at Henry Clay High School, we appreciate Henry Clay for opening doors, giving those fans who don't have options an opportunity to come learn about what our schools do and navigate these schools.
So how we, I mean, we continue to say all the time, how are we going to get more parents to get involved at this level? Are we doing anything different this year? Advertise it?
Yeah, one of the things we did do differently was we considered, we first assessed the location. Location, location, location.
Had a better location.
It doesn't matter. We knew that at Bryan Station High School, we had a larger return because of families who actually come to get these supports are able to get there. Many of them ride the bus. We did some taxis, a couple of, like, the first time we were at the old 1555 property, had Uber take families home that were there, got there, wanted to be there and couldn't get back. So we're trying to be innovative. We may have to at some point put some bus routes and allow our transportation department to engage, to take families to and from. I think those are great ideas. But again, the program continues to be, to grow, but it certainly, we can improve by getting more exponential families participating, tearing down some of those barriers that transportation may be a problem for.
Well, and Will and I recently learned in conversations that we've been having with Lex Tran that actually of all of our schools, Henry Clay has the most access through the public bus routes because it's run on like two lines.
So those are excellent. Years ago, we talked about working with the Lex Tran to get vouchers and bus tokens. As much as people don't understand that the urban school transition and the process is really riding the city bus, those are highly effective means because those routes are typically right in line with all the access points. So those are things we continue to explore around this collective impact, how we can continue to expand this work. Thank you.
You know, I guess what you can see that's kind of apparent in just the discussion with Power Scholars and as we kind of move into the safety 10-point plan and even the presentation, Daryl, that you kind of talked a little bit about in terms of the work that you're kind of doing regarding looking at some of our neighborhoods, it's a very holistic approach. I mean, I think before we were so fragmented with some of the issues that we were dealing with and people would say, well, who owns this? Does the school system own it? Does the community own it? And I think especially when it came to mental health services, everybody knew there was an issue, but no one said, well, how do we kind of address that issue? So I think what we start to see here is when we talk about safety, we talk about well-being. I'm really proud that the, it's almost like Fayette County is becoming the convenor of a lot of different stakeholder groups around how do we tackle the problem from all different angles and bring individuals who are working in various segments of our community to make sure that we're maximizing the time and effort. So I mean, it's just encouraging to see the progress that has been made over a short period of time as we've kind of moved through. But I think all of the things being aligned helps us when we talk about that S-word of sustainability. How do we sustain what we're doing? But when we systemize and systematize everything that's what we're doing, I think that kind of helps us. So just want to commend the work as we kind of see all the pieces and parts come together.
Thank you, Bob. And I believe that concludes the superintendent's report. And at this time of our meeting, this is the part of our meeting where we have public comment for any of the items on tonight's agenda, but we do not have any individuals signed up to speak on items on this night's agenda. We do have a couple who will be speaking at the end of the meeting on items not on tonight's agenda. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the September 9th, 2019 planning special meeting, the minutes of the September 11th, 2019 special meeting, and the minutes of the September 23rd, 2019 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve all three of those?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Love.
Second.
Second by Mr. Murphy. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes 5-0. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Nash.
Second.
A second by Mr. Love. Is there any further discussion or questions about anything on the consent agenda? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. At this time, we'll walk through the action items. The first item we have tonight is a bus purchase. And the recommendation of the motion is to authorize the chairman and secretary to execute a bus purchase authorization with KDE for 19 buses and execute an equipment and security agreement between KISTA and the board of a value of $2,221,476.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Murphy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daniels. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. The second item on tonight is a motion to approve the request for the above schools for school-wide fundraising projects to be held on the dates listed. So you have a list of schools and their fundraising.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Love.
Second.
Second by Mr. Murphy. Any further questions or discussion?
No, my only discussion, you guys may have already talked about this. Is there a way we can get this earlier? I don't know if I wasn't at the planning meeting, so.
We didn't discuss this earlier. I think what we would like to see, and we have talked about this in prior meetings, is instead of twice a year, even, I don't know if we have to make a policy change or maybe this is what we can, I think we'd like to see them really almost on a monthly basis. That way we know. That way we know what's going on in our facilities and/or that we can, um, support them and, and promote them as well.
Certainly.
So I think if we could get, and then I think there's a lot of confusion too, when they only come to us twice a year, and people also worry that they've missed the deadline. And so if we can maybe even just have a report each month that people's having, and if we need to change a policy, we can do that.
We will definitely look into that.
I think that's what everybody wants. Am I correct?
Just want to know what the fundraisers are.
What's going on? Know what's going on.
Absolutely.
Agree. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
And if need be, sorry to go return to that previous. If need be, we can even do it like the field trips where we approve them at planning meetings. Because I know sometimes it's tough. If you miss the deadline, you're like, oh, I can't start a fundraiser yet. So we could have some flexibility in that regard.
We will definitely review this and get back to you.
I mean, I think it also begs the question if this is something, I don't know if by law the board has to approve it, but is this something the board needs to approve, or that we could have a superintendent does need to approve as well?
Okay.
Just food for thought.
I think for us, at least for me, I speak for me, I would like to know what's going on in our facilities. And again, I like to know, like, if they are having something, we could go if it's, you know, sometimes I find out after the fact, like, six months after the fact.
I, I know in the districts I've worked in, it's always required board approval, so I don't know if it's a state. I think it's a red book requirement, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
We've recently implemented a, a district-wide scheduling, um, software that I think could potentially help in sort of managing and getting reports. So, uh, we will definitely look into this to see what we can provide.
Maybe more detail. While we're at it. We're just wishing.
All right.
So. All right. A motion is in order to approve a contract with Scholastic Book Fairs.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Love.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nash. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. A motion is in order to approve a contract with Davis Demographics.
Steve Hill here.
Yeah, he is.
Steve, come on up.
He is.
Tell us a little bit about this.
Good evening. Um, so the contract you have in front of you is the, um, the consultants, consulting firm Davis Demographics. It does all of our GIS planning, in other words, um, updating our streets, uh, um, projections of population growth, mapping, they, uh, our online mapping tools, something they maintain for us. For me, one of the greatest benefits they've been to, to me is the, um, during the times of redistricting, and we're not redistricting this year.
Thank you. Please say that again, please.
We are not redistricting this year. But in those times, they serve on the, as an active participant in the, uh, redistricting committees. And they can do real-time, uh, movement of maps and neighborhood study areas and, and have real-time data right in front of us. And it was, it's a great, tremendous resource. Uh, we, we also find having a third-party professional, um, service that does all this work for you is really important in, in times when we're looking at future building projects to have, uh, a set of eyes that maybe we wouldn't have the expertise in. So, um, they've been a great, uh, resource for us. So that's, that's kind of the purpose and what they do for us. So I'll answer any questions if you like.
Yes, Steve, since we've been using Davis, I mean, especially over the years, have you found that the predictions have gotten much better?
They have. And so what I, actually, and they'll tell you, if you get three years removed from redistricting that, and we're in that timeframe, that they will have now some good historical data that they can, uh, do. And I, and I do believe they, um, we've found some of the things in our system that we need to clean up to make sure that they have the data they need to do, to do a real good job. I think one, last year, they were two hundred, uh, was it two hundred students as a district off of what the overall population they, they projected, which is pretty good. If you, if you mask that over seventy buildings, that's a pretty good, uh, target.
It was interesting going through the redistricting the first time when we started going through it because there were lots of assumptions you had to make. And it was almost to the point you knew sometimes make the numbers. But it was like understanding the culture a little bit of the district as well and, and the patterns of how people utilize our special programs, um, that I think there was a little bit kind of trying to say, it could possibly happen, but we didn't know. That's what the nature of the question.
Yeah, and I, I just think it's also an opportunity to, um, when you have a professional firm. By the way, they're, they're in Dallas. They do, I mean, they're, they're stationed out of, uh, Los Angeles, but they do the Los Angeles school districts, uh, Dallas, the major metropolitan areas they do this work for. So, um, to have, to have another set of eyes on it for our community, to know the data's not just coming from Steve Hill or anybody else that generates here in the district, it's a, a professional third-party contractor's been beneficial.
Have we always done the single-year versus the three-year with them, or?
I would love to do the three-year, but in policy, we have to do the, the single-year from what I've been explained, um, due to, I guess, not being obligated to a three-year. Obviously, it would be a cheaper option. That's how I know you see that.
Shelley's not here, but I think you can do a three-year, but it has to be approved yearly. Uh, but the contract could cover a, a longer period of time, but it still would need to come before the board.
Add that to your list to look at. And I want to just reiterate two things that you said tonight. The first is, this is the first year of the, well, it's the third year. So it's the first year that we're really seeing the accurate numbers of them because everyone who was grandfathered in and whatnot. And so we're really trying to get an accurate picture. I also want to reiterate, we are not redistricting right now. I had a call from a mother the other day who thought we were gonna send her elementary child to a new elementary school that we haven't bought land for, or planned, or built, or anything by the end of this. She thought by the end of this year, her kid was gonna switch schools mid-year. And so I want to make sure that everyone understands we're forecasting and we're planning. This is the first year we're actually seeing if it worked. And so we're, we don't have any plans to move anybody anytime soon.
And I will tell you the last thing, you're exactly right. Um, they're, they're great with, if we have a project, for example, for a local planning committee was asked to generate some data, and they're able to, uh, do some special projects for us. Um, and I'm, I'm hopeful to use them for some enrollment projections. This is residential projections they do, but actual enrollment projections going forward for each building so that I can compare that to the numbers that I generate. And you have, it's two different data points that you can look at, so.
Right, because that goes back to like the culture, what you said, like, if this is a neighborhood that goes to program schools or goes to private schools, or goes, um, and.
Board member Murphy too, um, this is a heck of a discount. We can do three years.
I'm with you, and I'm, I'm.
And, and we're on the cusp of a census, uh, too, so, so we're gonna have to be doing some planning ahead as well once we get that census data.
Mine is a lock, and this is a huge discount, and the contract is.
Totally agree.
Golden contract.
So is that amended?
Uh, no, so are we amending it, like, because, or do we not want to approve it tonight? We haven't actually made a motion yet.
Yeah, or Shelley's actually, I don't know, ten to the three, but if we can, we need to.
So you want to table it and bring it back to our planning meeting for action?
We table it, does that mess you up if we?
Um, other than we're trying to get, uh, some payment out to them on, on going forward. But, I mean, we can do what we need to do. This is your call, I don't want to.
Why don't we approve the motion and then have a second motion that directs the superintendent to do something? Because then we could approve the contract and then.
But we don't want to approve this contract, we want to approve the three-year contract that's cheaper.
I mean, can we amend the contract? Can we amend the contract then approve it, or? Although we don't have a legal, we could do it, and then if the legal counsel says it's not.
I don't, I don't.
And I think you approve it, then you, then you amend it, so.
Or we?
Yeah, okay.
Typically, what we've done for a period like that is it's, it's a three-year period, but it's always subject to annual renewal by the board because I guess by law, you technically can't approve a multi-year commitment like that. So, but the vendor at least knows that.
We want to move that way?
Yeah, exactly.
I was just gonna say, but, you know, here in the contract, it's, it's really checked off from legal's perspective, saying we're one year. So we have to, if we approve it, we're approving it based upon a year, but we can always go back and revise at our planning meeting, correct?
All right.
And given our relationship with the company, they might then retroactively.
And they, they're often the work with. They, they do, they will do anything we need them to do.
All right, so a motion is in order to approve a contract with Davis Demographics for one year as submitted to us. And then we will add this to our planning agenda to review, and we have.
Try to cover a longer period.
To try to cover a longer period.
I'm all for it if you guys want to.
A motion by Mr. Daniels, the second by Mr. Nash. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Our last item is, oh, well, we need this first. You have to come on up. Our monthly treasurer, we can't approve it until we see it.
I've been given some verbal instruction on how to fix the clicker, so let's see if this works. Okay. My son would be so proud, I'm not a gamer, but I fixed the remote.
Good evening. The general fund report for the month of September two thousand nineteen reflects as follows. We have a forty-two million dollar fund balance. Last year this time, with seventeen percent revenue versus sixteen percent, but one percent higher, our expenses are the same related to expenses compared budget. This is a deeper analysis that shows you the same thing I just said to you in the previous screen. You see the working budget, the year-to-date adjusted budget, and our year-to-date expenditures for both two thousand nineteen, twenty versus two thousand eighteen, nineteen. General fund overview of all funds reflects, reflects total revenue, one hundred seventy-seven million approximately, and ninety million dollars in expenditures, which is eighty-seven million dollars fund balance over all funds. We look at funds one through fund seven thousand. This is a detailed breakout of all those funds. You notice we're on fund three-ten, which is capital outlay. We received one point eight million halfway throughout the year. We see the other one point eight million in the spring. A building fund, building fund property tax revenue is now coming in, so that will be reversed real soon. And as you can see, the comparative, it shows that eighty-seven million over all funds. Revenue for two thousand twenty versus two thousand nineteen shows a hundred and one million versus eighty-three million point five, excuse me, with seventeen point five million dollars higher. When you take into account the beginning balance, it's thirty million this year versus thirty-one million last year. So it's one million dollars less than last year. Expenses are six million dollars higher this year versus last year. I did a deeper analysis, look at this, three point three million of this is related, related to vendor payments, two point seven million is related to salaries and fringes. The general fund reflects, so balance sheet fifty million, liabilities eight million. Overall, our financial position remains very sound in relation to assets versus liability. The trust funds are listed as follows. Are there any questions or concerns?
The, the vendor payments?
Yes.
That you talked about earlier, which vendors are we talking about?
There'll be several, I mean, they're paying off a depot, um, construction vendor payments, just in general.
But outside the norm, or just typical?
No, it's the typical payments, they just more at this time of the year.
Okay, I understand.
Now, when we do the year-to-year comparison, are we, uh, accounting for the change in the way we account for encumbrances? Or, or are we using the old approach to encumbrances from the previous year? Does that make sense?
Yes, you said encumbrances, right?
Yeah.
Yes, we've changed that process last year. John and I talked to KDE and Tyler, which is our accounting system over at Munis. We made that change in May and June, it automatically changes. So now we do not account for encumbrances in this report. Encumbrance is just a promise to pay, but we don't know if it's gonna be there.
And then that's, and that's factored in the year-to-year comparison?
Factored in the comparison.
Thank you.
At our last board meeting, we talked about, um, receiving a side-by-side budget of the ten-point safety plan from fiscal year nineteen compared to fiscal year twenty, so that we could see the evolution of spending. Is that something we can still do?
On the safety plan? Mm-hmm. Yes, I, I will, I will get that to the superintendent, uh, this week, probably tomorrow.
All right. There's no further questions for the staff. I'll entertain a motion as in order to accept the monthly treasurer's report of revenue expense reports as presented to the board.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Love.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nash. Any further discussion amongst the board? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's, I'm turning it back over to you for a hot minute.
Yep, thank you, board members. We have, uh, several informational items, uh, for the board's review this evening, including the school activity fund report, the personnel changes for October, and the position control document. If there are no questions about any of those items, that concludes the board agenda for the eve, for this evening, and we do have a need to go into closed session.
Um, I do want to take a moment and remind the board that ahead of our planning meeting beginning at four or four-thirty, Ms. Daly, we have, four-thirty, we have a, um, board training for all of you. So let me know if you can't come. I know where your numbers are and who needs what trainings. I'm just saying.
And KSBA's doing another webinar, I think, is it next week, next Wednesday?
I think so. They were gonna have one after the election, so I'm gonna leave some of that out, but that also is helpful. Mr. Nash gets the Star Student Award. He has done office hours. Um, with that, I would like to take a moment and conduct, um, public comment. So our next item is where the public may address the board for any topic of the district-related concern that is not on the official agenda for this meeting, policy one dot four or five. Please note that since these items are not on tonight's agenda, or our board may or may not comment, it's important to know that this is not intended to be a time where issues will be debated. The chair will determine the amount of time for speaker, and depending on the lateness of the hour and the number of speakers. So we have two individuals, um, signed up this evening. And, um, if it's, I'm gonna give you each, um, two minutes apiece to speak on your topic. Um, and the first person, I believe it's Kaia or is it Kia? I was gonna ask you, Arnold. And, um, I'd like to bring you up here so you can talk. All right, I will give you three minutes. We're filling, I apologize. So three minutes, come on up. You come up here, to the table.
Thank you. Hurry, your three minutes have already started.
No. Thank you.
So I go first?
Go, you go.
All right, good evening. My name is Kia Arnold, and, um, I am a stakeholder in the FCPS community. Um, one, I'm a member of the Lexington Urban League Young Professionals. We are here tonight. I'm also a member of Delta Sigma Theta, I'm an officer, and I'm a parent of an FCPS student. I came through the FCPS school system, um, I volunteer, and finally, I am a substitute teacher. So as a sub, I, this is my second school year subbing for the district. I have been frustrated because a lot of the schools that I go to, I'm always having to cover other classes that I am not prepared for. Uh, my last experience subbing, I was put in a math class, and math is not my thing, so I was not able to help those particular students. Um, it wouldn't be as frustrating if this didn't happen every single time I go into these particular schools. So I was wanting to know what the district is doing to hire more subs or to get subs to come into the buildings. I don't have that much time, so I can't really go into it, but it, it, it does put a strain on the school as a whole because I'm watching the sub-coordinators struggle trying to coordinate subs. Okay, well, we only have four, so I need you four to split up these times. And the students, it's a disservice for them because there was one time where I was one of three teachers for a class period. Um, and then also, when there's not enough subs there, the teachers have to step in, and they have to give up their planning periods to cover these other classes, which puts a stress on them. I hear them talking. Um, and one of the school, uh, personnels were talking about how, you know, they wish the district would come in and see what it's like when there's not enough people to cover these classes. And I understand that you all are doing job fairs and trying to get students to, um, in high school to come take the educational route, but is there anything else that you all are doing to try to get subs? Because it, sometimes it's very frustrating saying yes to jobs because I know I'm gonna have to cover and go outside of portables and come back in and be late and having kids, you know, already in the classroom. So sometimes it's like, do I even want to continue doing this? So that's, that's my public comment.
First of all, what? Oh, I was gonna say, thank you for subbing, because, um, I, we, we do appreciate our subs as a district. Um, and a couple of things in this past year, as you are aware, we have increased the pay. And, and so we've hoped that that has attracted. And last month, we had the superintendent's eval, and so as the board, we have one employee. But our superintendent has six thousand employees, and he's overall. And one of the things that we, um, discussed when we did it last month is that we knew this was an issue and that we, um, charged him to kind of do some research and figure out and come back to us as a board to figure out how we, as a board, can support him in alleviating the stress in the situation. I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in, but we did just do that at the September board meeting.
So we will take your feedback and.
Yes.
We've been looking at this for some time, but we will definitely work with our HR folks and sort of make sure that we're staying vigilant because it is a challenge, there's a teacher shortage all across America, and so we will definitely take the feedback that you've provided and make sure that we're working with our schools.
And if you have ideas, we welcome them. So feel free to email us and we'll pass them on to the superintendent, or you can email them to the superintendent because we, I mean, we need to hear from those on the front lines about, you know more than we do. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks.
And the second individual. The second individual that we have tonight, I can't read your handwriting.
I believe Ms. Davis has left.
Oh.
She talked to our school chiefs earlier, but I do not believe that she's remaining.
I don't see her, that's why she signed in.
Her concerns were addressed by the middle school school chief as well as the elementary school chief, so she's left.
Okay. So we don't have any additional public comment this evening. So at this time, I will ask if there are any additional board requests. And if there's not, I will entertain a motion, make the agenda part of the official board minutes.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Love, a second by Mr. Nash. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Hold on, let me read the whole. Legal ease. So a motion is to go in a closed session pursuant to KRS six one dot eight one zero one B to discuss acquisition or sale of real property, KRS six one dot eight one one C to discuss proposed or pending litigation, and pursuant to KRS six one dot eight one zero one F to discuss personnel. And I believe, Mr. Love, you've made this motion?
So moved.
And a second by Mr. Murphy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.